A good evening. Thank you for attending tonight our April 15th, 2021 regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I believe Peter Casper is on. Is that a true statement?
Yes, Dan, I'm in the car. I'm on the way to Virginia, so I'm going to keep my camera off for those that will get motion sickness. But I am in the car listening.
Perfect. So, so I call our meeting to order. I ask that we please stand. You can stay driving, Peter. It's okay. For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I got a call from Selectman Mark Rivera, and I think Donna received a call from Selectman John Collins. Both of them are on the road. Mark's going to try to join the meeting from on the road like Peter, I think, is doing. So he might cut in and out, but he's expected to be here. And there's John now.
Uh, Dan, did you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm here too. I won't have a picture up, but I'm here at the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you very, very much. Okay, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? Any additions?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, so you received the racial justice and equity PowerPoint from me, I think, yesterday?
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to do an introduction today. But it's so, it's so long. I'd like to break it into two so that we have, talk about it next, next, at our next meeting also.
Okay, feeling of the rest of the body? Gail?
Zan is fine by me.
Uh, Peter?
Sure, that's my name.
Uh, Mark?
That's fine, Dan.
Okay, and I agree with everybody. So, okay, we'll, we'll break it into two sections for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. Any other additions or changes? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our public comment section. This section is reserved for people who want in attendance to briefly address the board. We request that comments be limited to three minutes or less. People wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and Donna can give you that information.
We will do. Good evening. So anybody who is in attendance that would like to make a public comment, if you could just type your name and comment in the chat bubble. And we have a comment section at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. We do have one letter that was submitted and the request was that it be read into the record during public comment. So I've been asked to read that letter. Um, and I'll do so now.
Um, excuse me, did we receive two letters or one letter?
I'm aware of one letter. I'm not sure.
Isn't there one?
I'm only aware of one letter.
Oh, I thought there was a letter from Kim Hills.
That went out to the budget. Yes, you're right. That did go out then onto the whole budget group like we normally do for budget. That wasn't specifically directed to the Board of Selectmen, but we can bring that up.
Okay, great. No, that's, that's all right. That's fine.
Attention, Andy Tierney and Board of Selectmen. It is with a heavy heart that we are addressing you. My wife has been in Hebron for 60 years and I have been here for 40 years. We have never witnessed a more disgraceful and disrespectful display of behavior and character as we did last week while watching the new chief being voted in. It appears that Mr. John Collins is unable to consult with his fellow selectmen and town manager prior to anything. We have been watching many of the Zoom meetings only to see Mr. Collins disrupt and find fault with everything. He crossed the line at the last meeting. The embarrassment he subjected Chief Starkell's family to is horrendous. Mr. Collins insulted and found unjustified fault with the new chief, Mr. Tierney, and the Board of Selectmen. His accusations are unprofessional, without merit, and illustrate his inability to work with others. He is rude, disrespectful, and without loyalty to our town. He should resign for the good of the town. It's signed sincerely Walt Norris and Deb Horton. And Dan Smith is here and has a public comment.
Good evening, esteemed Board of Members. Good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Selectmen and John Collins. Over the past few months, it has been made clear that John Collins is unable to perform the duties of selectmen. He has shown our community that he is unwilling to work with our fellow board members and our town employees. I have spoken with numerous citizens from our community and everyone agrees that John has to go. I spoke with people affiliated with the Republican, Democrat, and independent parties, and there's an anonymous feeling that John has a personal agenda to attack those who don't agree with him, especially the town manager. Two months ago, he verbally attacked our town manager and made false claims that the manager played games with town funds. John had no evidence to prove these accusations. Then last month, he attacked the chairman of the board with false accusations of ethical issues. These false accusations could and should be investigated as defamation of character. John needs to be held accountable for his actions and should resign, not after the budget process like he stated in the River East, but now. When a vote does not go John's way, he acts out by throwing a tantrum. John attacked the entire Board of Selectmen last month when he claimed that there were rubber stamping everything for the town manager. Our board works very hard to understand the issues that we face as a community, and they spend many hours to determine the best outcome. Even when a member of the board votes in a manner that I don't agree with, I know that that member took the time to try and understand the issue. When John makes false claims like he did last month, it is a smack in the face to our wonderful Board of Selectmen. I'm afraid that with the behavior John is showing, other board members will request the town lawyer to be present for future meetings to protect themselves. John is creating a hostile work environment for the board. His actions have and will most likely continue to cause a financial burden on the town with lawyer fees. John, if you care about this community, resign tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Thank you for taking the time. Okay, hearing none. We will move on. Andy?
Yes, so under the good to know, we have a talk from Caitlin Hershey from the Green Committee, and that is in reference to Earth Day that's coming up. So we felt it appropriate and Caitlin made herself available. So without further ado, Caitlin can introduce herself, let people know what she's about, and speak about Earth Day.
Hi, everyone. My name is Caitlin Hershey. I am the Chair of the Hebron Green Committee. I'm here with a couple of my team members. They're off camera, but they are here in support as well and they can pipe in if they feel the need. But I just wanted to stop by for a minute tonight and talk to you guys about a couple of things that are going on in town. As Earth Day is next week, as some of you know, we typically do a roadside cleanup as well as some activities in town, but due to COVID, we are, you know, a little bit limited in what we can do this year. There's, there's no gathering and there's no teams going out this year. Um, but we are encouraging residents to still consider picking up curbside litter. You know, as most of you know, and some of you have actually been, some of the Board of Selectmen have actually been out with us on some of these roadside pickups. And, you know, you might have seen driving down Old Coldchester Road or down Mill Street. You know, there's a lot of litter and debris after, you know, the snowplows come through and after a long winter and the snow melts. So we're really encouraging residents to at least clean up their own curbside. At most, if they'd like to pick other parts of other roads in town and click up and pick up any of the debris there. You know, we're really just looking for some help to, you know, get some of the litter off of the roads before the brush starts growing in for the season. As you can tell, Donna has actually pulled up our website, and if anyone would like to go to it, it is hebrongosgreen.com/EarthDay, one word. And this is really the most up-to-date place that we have all of the information. As you can see, Donna is actually rolling over some of the other items on the site. We have a lot of material on the transfer station, the recycling center, you know, we work very closely with Public Works. There's a couple of other things that you can do such as composting. I'm going to get into pollinators in a moment. You know, water conservation, all sorts of stuff. There are so many things that we can be doing as a town, as residents, to really contribute to the slowing of, you know, this climate crisis and all the other stuff that's going on out there. So back to Earth Day. Donna, if you go into events, yep, Hebron Earth Day. Um, these pictures are actually from 2019, right before, you know, the year before COVID hit and we stopped doing the gatherings. You'll see Dan, Dan, I think Brian are in some of these. We've got Dan in the brambles picking out litter from over by Town Hall getting cut up. But anyways, you know, as I mentioned, we're really encouraging residents to just take a walk to the end of their driveway, see what's out there. I can guarantee you're going to find some sort of litter. A really big offender in town is nips, surprisingly. And while those are typically recyclable, we are commonly encouraging people to actually throw most of those bottles and cans and nips into the garbage because they are so dirty and we cannot take those as recycling at our transfer station. But other little things that are going on, we are, we do have a member of our committee who also is the head of the Green Garden Gang, and so she is going to be doing some pollinator activities. She'll be selling birdhouses at the Ted's Garden Mart. I believe that is from 10 to 2. They're $20 a piece and all the money goes directly back into the Green Garden Gang. If you guys don't know, they've been planting pollinator gardens at Raymond Brook Preserve as well as Old Town Hall and a couple of other little places in town. The Green Committee itself will be replanting the pollinator garden over by the World War II Watchtower. We actually partner with the Historic Society. Pat Larson plants a victory garden over there as well every year. So, you know, a couple of months, if you guys are out there, please take a walk and check it out. You know, it's a really nice little moment over there with the rose garden and all that good stuff. Other activities, oh, I should mention as well, speaking of Public Works, Mike, one of our teammates, has actually been able to secure for another year a dumpster at Town Hall for the weekend of the 24th and the 25th. So if you are picking up any roadside debris, please feel free to toss those bags straight into the dumpster at Town Hall. It's just a little bit closer, you know, if you live on the north end of town instead of going all the way down to the transfer station. So we're really appreciative of Public Works for helping us do that for another year. But I'll jump back to pollinators. You know, pollinators in general are a really big hot topic right now. They're obviously in decline. They're having a really tough time and Hebron has been a, become a member of the pollinator pathway. So the World War II Watchtower Garden, Raymond Brook Preserve, these are all pieces of the Northeast Pollinator Pathway. They're basically places for pollinators to rest and to eat and recharge. That's one thing that residents can actually do and on their own property, which is, you know, very socially distanced approved. Is save a little piece of land for a couple handfuls of seeds, you know, let a little piece grow wild. Plant some native plants. You know, there's so much that you can do on your own property to help the pollinators. And if anyone is interested, we have a page, hebrongosgreen.com/pollinators, which Donna is on right now. And we also encourage anyone to reach out to Michelle. Her email is on our Earth Day page and our Pollinator page. If you'd like to volunteer or learn more about pollinators and what you can do for that. And as far as Earth Day goes, there's so much other stuff you can do. If you hop back to that Earth Day page, Donna, our teammate Lindsay Ockman has actually compiled a list of some ideas that people can also do at home that don't necessarily include our roadside cleanup, but you can do these things all year round. Starting a compost bin, of course, we mentioned pollinator gardens. Getting your recycling in order is actually a huge thing because the cleaner and more efficiently our recycling is sorted and, you know, thrown into our recycling bins, the more it can get recycled. If everything's dirty and things that don't belong in there get thrown in, it's, it turns into trash. If you scroll down just a little bit more, Donna. You know, other quick items, starting at garden, food garden, you know, vegetables, not relying so much on the commercial food chain. Plogging, which is actually interesting. Lindsay introduced this to me. This is when you are walking or jogging. I would prefer walking. But if you are going outside and you are on the airline trail, taking a walk in Burnt Hill, Vets Park, wherever you may be, and picking up a couple of pieces of litter while you're at it, that is actually coined plogging. Reading green literature, you know, reading the Lorax with the kids, getting your family involved, getting the kids fired up. You know, they obviously learn a lot about this in school, but it's, of course, our responsibility to, you know, help them out when we're at home and continue some of these, you know, some, some of these things that were there learning in school. And then, of course, making your home energy efficient, you know, LED light bulbs, making sure there's no drafts and leaks in the wintertime, you know, making sure your appliances, if they're 50 years old, maybe replacing them with something a little bit more energy efficient. But the bottom line is really that there is so much that you can do to be a little bit greener. Hebron as a town is really great at, you know, forward green thinking. We've got an awesome, you know, Town Hall. Planning and zoning department are Board of Selectmen, of course, you know, are really on board with this, and we encourage residents in any way, shape, or form to just be a little greener because those small acts really truly add up on a grander scale. So if you can get out there on the 24th and the 25th, please do. Please clean up your roadside, clean up whatever road you are near, whatever road you're on. Of course, priority is safety, not only socially distancing, but wear something bright, be cautious of cars. People do go fast on some of our roads. And enjoy it. It's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful time to be outside. So hopefully you guys can all make it and maybe we'll see you at the dumpster.
Thank you very, very much. Fantastic report. And all I can say is, you know, I thank the Green Committee for, for doing this. It is just so important just for the health cleanliness of our community. You know, one of the, the worst things that I see out there are, well, there's a few. There's like the soda, the little plastic things that hold the six packs of sodas, you know. Looking at it from the wildlife's perspective, if they get their heads through that, they may not be able to get that off. You know, plastics, while such an important part of, of our society now, can really cause havoc with, with wildlife. You know, also broken bottles. I, I don't understand what people find the joy of smashing bottles on rocks and stuff. I, I don't get it. It's, it's dangerous for people. It's dangerous for our pets and it's dangerous for wildlife. A little bit of consideration. Just goes such a long way. You know, don't just flip the cigarette butt out the window. Don't just throw the beer bottles or the, or the cans out the windows or the McDonald's or, or whatever bags. You know, it's all of our world and, you know, it's such a great, great day to get out and I'm hoping it's nice weather.
Me too.
It's a lot of fun. I know, I have a blast. Anybody else?
Thanks so much.
Anybody else have any questions? Now, will that dumpster accept anything that they find along the roads or?
Yes, so it is essentially a trash dumpster. Like we, we've done a separate recycling and trash dumpster in the past, but the recycling has not been able to collect very much because a lot of roadside litter really does. It's got that salt on it. It has dirt, you know, it's been tossed around and it truly cannot be recycled at our transfer station. So we encourage people if they do find, you know, some gunk in some of these cans and bottles to just throw them out.
If somebody comes across, like, I was just thinking, you know, paint or things that should be considered hazardous, should that be put off to the side or?
Yes, yes. If you do find anything, gasoline cans, we found, I think, we found oil, like, you know, like Valvoline bottles before with oil. You know, please properly recycle that. Paint can go to, I, I don't believe ACE takes it anymore, but you can go to paintcare.org. You can do our hazardous waste pickup, which most of us should have those flyers in our mailbox by now. You know, anything that is hazardous should still not go into the trash can. You have to still properly recycle that.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you. Thank Mike. Thank you all very, very, very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Board.
Hope to see you the 24th and 25th. Two-day event. Okay. Moving on will be our appointments and resignations. We have a motion here that I will read. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to declare a vacancy on the Ram Board of Education with a term to run until December 1st, 2023. Further, that the Selectmen designate Friday, April 23rd, 2021 as the posting date for the vacancy notice. The 35th day and final day by which nominations shall be received is Friday, May 28th, 2021. And I believe as what normally occurs is that letters will go out to the parties for anyone, you know, for the parties to make their recommendations. So anyone in, out there who wants to run for that seat, please get your, your letters of interest into the town manager's office.
Dan, can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead.
Dan, does it, because being was a Republican, does it have to be a Republican that replaces the seat left vacant? Or can it be any party?
Normally, we replace an individual who has left a border commission with someone from that party that they were affiliated with. It is not set stone, but it is.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Man is going to be very difficult to replace. He's just a one-of-a-kind person for what, what he did and it's sad. Just wanted to make that comment.
And, and you are so, so correct, so correct. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye. Gail?
Gail, aye.
Peter?
Peter, aye.
Mark?
Mark, Rivera, aye.
Don?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next, the town managers' report?
Yes, welcome, Mr. Chairman. So Monday night, the Ram Board passed their budget. Tuesday night, the Board of Finance met the Hebron Board of Finance and they made some cuts to the budget. So they're going to go back to the Board of Selectmen tonight. For the Board of Selectmen pick what they want that to come from. There is a suggestion or a flavor from the Board of Finance and then a note from myself. We'll get to that later in the agenda, but that was Tuesday night. Still busy with the union contracts. There'll be an executive session on the next agenda for Public Works, clerical, and also we had a reopener for supervisors. So you'll be seeing those. I attended on Wednesday night was Alliance Club meeting to show my face. I do that once a year and let them know they're in support, representative of Board of Selectmen. And they have a festive year coming up with car shows, a pancake breakfast picnic. They are moving forward with the fireworks show and also the Hebron Fair is scheduled to take place this year. So they've got a pretty busy agenda and they're looking for the townspeople to support them. So I was there to let them know that anything they need that we can do, we're willing to work with them and they appreciated that. As far as Memorial Day goes, the veterans have chose not to hold a, a public parade. They will be doing a ceremony, marching from the American Legion down to the monument and doing a ceremony and a presentation and saluting and raising and lowering of the flag. Our referendum, excuse me, is May 4th. It's at the Hebron Elementary School on the budget, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Working on Hebron Day with Rich Marzy and the Parks and Recs Department to try to make that a little bit more flavorful. So we're, we had a meeting this week on that. We held an insurance consortium meeting today, still going well. We got our audit. We're in very good shape, right where we predicted to be. So that's great news. We're also working this week with the EDC. They're going to prepare an RFP to go out for a new consultant, and they're also looking to change it up a little bit this year and do some partnership with the Wyndham Chamber. It has some of the local stuff done through them. So eager to see the outcome of that and that'll be coming in front of you when that's ready to go out for approval. And I have some sad news to report, at least it is for me. Our town planner, Michael O'Leary, has sent me a letter of resignation after 26 years of employment with the town of Hebron. His last day officially will be June 11th. He has signed on to help us with the transition. But that's a key position within the town. I think he's done a, a good job while he was here, so we accept that with regret. Um, and I had a meeting today with all the town managers and town manager association in regards to going back in-person meetings. And we're working with the Health District on that to come up with a plan that we can do that safely. So that'll be brought to you at a later date or sooner, but not, not tonight. We're still working on that. And one other last thing. The property on 14 Main Street, the old Dick Gale House, there, it's been purchased and they're trying to renovate that for mixed use. And one of the things that would be helpful in that project is they're seeking a drainage easement to get rid of some of the water from that property. And they've approached the town to see if they can tap into the town's drainage system and run that through there into the brook. The reason I'm bringing that up tonight is that will be discussed on April 27th with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I wanted to make the Board of Selectmen aware that that conversation will be had. No decisions needed tonight, but I just, while that's being discussed, I wanted to make sure you guys were privy to that. And that's all I have, other than I want to make sure that people are aware, thanking the staff for working these meetings. You know, Donna runs the go-to meetings and Dory is out there broadcasting live on the Facebook page. So I want to recognize them for all the extra time and hours at night they put in. So thank you very much during this COVID pandemic.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. It's John Collins.
Yes.
So, um, I read the paper, the newspaper article about the new chief selection leads disagreement buyer, venerable Sloan Brewster. And I just want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, the Board of Selectmen did not get in the packet any information about Narkle, as far as I know. And certainly not the relevant information that came up during that meeting, which I think was important. The second, the second thing is that.
John, this, this, this isn't on the agenda. this isn't on the agenda.
This is, this has to do with the 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 town manager's report and what so and he said I just want to clarify, section eighty one there's no of the town Board of Selectmen. And we can't do review without information and the fact that more information this is like we should be getting information about the selections. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, item eight A.
Eight A is review the Town of Heber's emergency declaration, we just kept this on here and keep going from meeting to meeting, there's a recommendation there, Mr. Chairman, how you would like to proceed?
My personal feeling is at this point in time, I believe that we can remove the emergency declaration or or cancel it or whatever the proper wording would be. Now I'll I'll actually read the resolution. Uh that you know, we, the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, concur with the recommendations of the town manager to terminate the Town of Heber's emergency declaration effective April twentieth, two thousand twenty one. I don't, I I well, with that, I still feel that at this time in the best interest of our citizens, that we keep the Zoom meeting form of of our Board of Selectmen's meetings. And my my reasoning for that is because right now, according to uh well, the state reading in the papers, uh Commission of Fire Profession Control, um this the state is still in a four uh four percent uh COVID situation, Heberin is still in the red zone for COVID cases. And the and I'm gonna have Andy talk on it. What the managers or what the state would mandate if we were to go back to in-person meetings, I don't think we're ready for. Uh the the sign-ins and the space requirements, um I'm gonna let Andy talk on that, uh if but would this resolution affect that, that that would be my first question, I'll put that uh Andy or uh
Yeah, no, this this resolution would not affect that. What it's it's always been permitted that you could meet in public as long as you can do it safely. Each town or municipality or school board is different. The recommendation I forwarded to the Board of Selectmen today from the Health District is uh the key buzzword is if you can do it safely. And the situation in Heber, at least that we're faced with, is we have very tight meeting spaces and we we're not sure at whatever time, especially like a town meeting, you know, how much public's gonna attend, so we're not ready to do that yet due to the restrictions of the spacing and the hybrid equipment that we own, we're we're not capable of doing that, but I think it is in the near future, um and I'll work with the Health Director to make sure we develop a plan that's gonna be safe, keep the the uh the Board of Selectmen, the employees and the public safe, and once we have that in place, we'll be recommending that we do that.
Okay, so then, as I say, we have the resolution that uh we terminate the uh emergency declaration as of April twentieth, two thousand twenty one. What's the feeling on the board? Gail? You're on mute.
Always go to mute so we don't have static, but then you gotta remember to turn it off, so um I think we should terminate it.
Okay, Peter?
I agree, terminate the uh or I agree with the resolution the way the way it's been read.
Mark? Mark? We may have lost Mark, John?
Yeah. Um the um just to point out, the the emergency declaration was declared by the town manager and and the chairman of the board by a different uh part of the town charter, um so only you can can revoke it, I mean, we can
I understand, but I'm looking for your input.
Well, I obviously I I I want it revoked, I don't I don't want it submerged, no, I don't want it under emergency, I don't think it's necessary, I think we should meet
Okay, and I feel also that uh we should terminate the emergency declaration, uh and I would say the effective date being April twentieth. So we will uh consider the emergency uh declaration over as of April twentieth. Thank you for your input.
Chairman Larson?
Yes.
I uh I lost reception here for a little while, so I don't know what the discussion was, did uh Gail and Peter feel that the the um declaration should be revoked, removed? Was that their was that their advice?
Yes.
Okay, well, I I'm gonna dissent from that, uh it's gonna make a difference, but I don't think it should be revoked yet, but I realize that the discussion's done and we'll move on.
Thank you, thank you. Our next section is the uh review of the uh Board of Finance recommendation for transfer from unassigned fund balance to debt management.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you permit me, I'll speak to this.
Yes, please.
So it pretty much states what took place, so there was a conversation with the Board of Finance members that took place on their meeting on April sixth. The Board of Finance at that time voted to send to referendum a voted question on a transfer of one million dollars from the unassigned fund balance to the debt management fund. Since that meeting, the appropriate process for the request has been researched and the town attorney's opinion is attached, the town manager is recommending that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the transfer be considered at a supplemental or as a supplemental appropriation to be approved at a future town meeting, not not along with the uh the budget itself, because it it really can't be done that way and the Board of Finance doesn't have that authority, so uh it's just that they took it not knowing that information, we got it the next day and I communicated that to the Board of Finance and we have it in front of the Board of Selectmen today as it reads.
Okay, well, if that's that's what the town attorney is stipulating to maintain uh compliance with the charter, then I don't see any option but to accept that. So to me, that sounds like it is what it is. And so that'll be something that, you know, at some point in the future, we'll have to uh go for a s- a future special town meeting to get that uh discussed and and accepted or or declined depending on what the the taxpayers want to do.
We, just for point of information, we have other items pending for a town meeting as well, so we will need to um have one, so we'll have some things on an agenda for a town meeting.
Okay. Okay. So then our next thing would be eight C and we're going with the updated eight C or uh or the original eight C or?
Well, the to the rest of the board, what happened is the Board of Finance has met again, so it would be the updated eight C that's up on the board, we got since the packet went out, so attaches to Board of Finance's recommended budget submitted to the April sixth, twenty twenty one public hearing and updated action taken following the public hearing will be provided at the meeting. So the Board of Finance conducted a public hearing and meeting on Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, making further adjustments to the Board of Finance's recommended budget per the attached budget summary and budget adjustment detail. The Board of Finance will finalize their budget to send to referendum on Tuesday, April twentieth, God willing. Uh there are reductions to the Board of Selectmen's recommended budget totaling one hundred and twenty-six thousand four forty-five for the general government budget and one hundred and eleven thousand for the Board of Education's budget. The Board of Finance reduced general government budget twenty-six thousand four forty-five to reflect the anticipated COVID nineteen expenses and a hundred thousand dollars was recommended and a reduction if the Board of Selectmen feels fit. Getting new information regarding the Board of Ed Roof Project. The town manager concurs with the recommendation of a hundred thousand dollar reduction to the CIP in the Board of Ed Roof Project. For the twenty-six thousand four forty-five, the town manager's recommendation is that a specific area for reduction to the town budget be identified at this time, so what I'm trying to say is we could try to carry that through the the year and absorb that and not make any further reductions if if that would get this to referendum.
And we have done that in the past, we've done it successfully, so uh this wouldn't be the first time that we have looked for savings in the uh town's budget to be found as this as the year progresses. I'll read the resolution. It resolved that pursuant to the Hebrew Town Charter, Chapter nine, Finance and Taxation, Section nine oh two D, the Hebrew Board of Selectmen recommended the Board of Finance a proposed town government expenditure budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two of ten million three hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, which is a six point six five percent increase from the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget. This includes uh town government budget of eight million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. Contribution to capital improvement, those are projects over seventy-five thousand of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Contribution to open space of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Contribution to capital projects, these are projects ten thousand to seventy-five thousand of a hundred and fifty-two thousand twenty-two dollars. Contribution to revaluation, fifty thousand, debt service, one million eighty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Be it further resolved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen recommends to the Board of Finance receive the final recommended expenditure budgets from the Hebrew Board of Education and the Ram Board of Education to be included in the town budget. Uh be it resolved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen recommend to the Board of Finance a proposed CIP budget of uh it's saying here eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, which includes road resurfacing and road improvements, three hundred and two thousand five hundred and eight dollars. Douglas library roof replacement of two hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Mini excavator with mower, Public Works and Parks, seventy-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Large dump truck with plow replaces truck twenty-four, one hundred thousand. Roll-off truck replaces truck fifteen of fifty thousand. Hebrew Elementary roofs or Hebrew Elementary Schools roof study of sixty thousand. Uh Peter's House restoration of twenty-five thousand, which equals that eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-three dollar amount. So resolutions on the on the uh floor, on the table, open it up for discussion.
Those can be done, just point of order, Mr. Chairman, those can be done separately as two different resolutions if you'd like.
Um
That's your call.
I I I really, we can do it as two separate resolutions. Um the my personal opinion is what was recommended makes sense. Uh the roof at the uh school is not leaking, uh this was more of of a um action that, you know, was was kind of covering for future potential issues. I, for one, am a a a big advocate that when projects like that are being proposed, that there be studies done to verify what you know what needs to be done, and I don't believe that that was done. Uh but I do believe that putting the sixty thousand in there to get that information is appropriate. And then next year, the money could then be put in to uh remedy whatever the roof issues are, if in fact roof issues are found. You know, so so to me, it it seems like a reasonable and logical way of of handling the uh the financial situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just I just have one comment about that. It seems like sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money to to study a roof, you can get a lot of roofing done for sixty thousand dollars. It seems it's it seems a little excessive.
Uh I'm I'm gonna have Andy, because I know he that uh well, I'll let Andy speak to that.
Okay, so just quickly, when we got the request for the roofs, we're talking two roofs at two separate schools. We immediately sent it to the Building Committee, the Building Committee started a review, a three-year-old plan that they had. Um the roofs aren't due, either one of them aren't due for full reimbursement to almost two or three years out, so we felt if we were to uh three years out, if we felt if we left that money in the CIP, it would just sit there. And now that we're trying to make up some ECS funds that we've been told are gonna be reduced by a hundred and eighty thousand, that could be an appropriate area, so the money just doesn't sit there. The Building Committee felt that sixty thousand dollars would give us a consultant to look at both roofs, so it's probably thirty thousand for each school to come back with a recommendation, an RFP to get us ready to go out to bid and be ready for the time when those roofs reach the age twenty-year uh expectancy when the state will finally give you fifty-plus percent to um redo those roofs, so that's the rationale and that's the recommendation of the uh Building Committee in Heber.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, uh Gail? Yeah, I'm mute.
Always, Gail Richmond, aye.
Try it again, Peter, please.
Sorry, Dan, Peter Casper, aye.
Uh Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Uh John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, our next topic is yeah, yes.
Mr. Chairman, uh can I clarify something for the public on on the roof replacement?
Uh sure.
I I simply just wanted to add to that, this is not just a study, this is preparation of all all or any drawings as well as specifications, uh so that we can go out to bid and get apples-to-apples comparisons. Um we have just completed some work at the library, and that one was actually more than thirty thousand, only because there are significant uh things that were left out when the building was built in as as well as uh just general upkeep and repair and issues that we have within the roof that need to be addressed, so. Um, I I just want to make sure that the public understands this is not just a study. This is the preparation of of the construction documents, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next is the uh fiscal year of two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget update and ballot questions. And
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so once again, this is attached to Board of Finance's recommended budget submitted to the April sixth, twenty twenty one, public hearing, an update on action taken following the public hearing will be provided at the meeting, so.
That is the original one from the package, so you can just skip over that.
Right.
Thank you.
Don, I was gonna employ you, or is it, I don't know if Elaine's on here or not, to go through that new one, if you would do that. I don't see Elaine. Yeah, Elaine's on here.
I'm on, I'm sorry. What would you like me to review?
The updated uh sheet now that the last Board of Finance is meeting.
Okay, so Donna's pulled it up on the screen. We're down to a one point eight seven percent increase across the board with all of the Boards of Education budget and the town government budget with the reductions as depicted by the Board of Finance um Tuesday evening and after April sixth meeting. So that now brings us to a mill rate, I believe. Donna, can you scroll down further? I think it's thirty six. We're it's at a flat mill, so we have no budget increase for the fiscal year.
Thank you. I was gonna say, it looked like the same number. Which is 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 good news. Uh. It's, I I don't know if people, if you want to get into uh the ECS and and what the state came up with, uh just as a brief overview of why suddenly that one hundred and eighty seven thousand showed up or not.
Well, just we we can just go quickly. This is a fluid document, it always is every year. We use the governor's numbers because those were the numbers that we had at the time. The state budget will not be finalized until April twenty third. But we pressed C C M, we pressed Senator Austin, who's on the Appropriations or Vice Chair of Appropriations Commissions. And they finally came out solidly and stated that we would be using the ten year ECS plan, which is a hundred and eighty thousand dollar reduction from what the governor's numbers were, so. We want to make sure when we're going into the voting booth, we give you the most factual numbers that we have at the time. And it's getting late, Board of Finance has to approve this uh next Tuesday. And we felt we had enough information to make this change now to be transparent and as accurate as we could be.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, moving on, uh our steering committee, and this is John. John?
Um. Are we set up with the presentation at all? Because I I go through a couple of slides, otherwise I can just give it an introduction and we can uh defer till next week, next next meeting.
I can I can call it up if you want to start. Um, just give me a minute, I'll get it.
Yeah, I'll just start. Um. This was, uh, so this is, we formed a in in because of the events of last year and how the world is changing with the death, murder, George Floyd and um you know, with the the pandemic. The world is changing and um guess Nikki Matthews brought forward a a resolution uh to the board concerning that racism was should be considered a public health crisis. So the idea was to uh to have a racial justice and equity committee to review what's happened in Hebron um for the last well, I mean, the history of Hebron and to try to understand how our demographics are, because we are one of the whitest towns in in the state. And um it's a demographic anomaly and um I guess what I would have would say was that the um Hebron is loo losing out by not having greater diversity. And so we've put together a committee um that included Donna Jolly, who's part of Code, which is um a committee that's set up to put forth, I guess, more understanding about uh racial justice and equity in in the community. Jackie Previn, who's a a young uh Latina, she's a prosecutor in the state. Um, and she's she's moved to to Hebron, and she gave us a great perspective on the conservative side. Joyce Zuzol, who's a, I think, a psychotherapist, who's also uh has come to Hebron, I think in the last ten years. And uh Mark Ribera, who is a member of the board, and everybody knows Mark, he's a local policeman. But Mark also brings a unique background in that he um grew up, I think, in um the north, he at least spent part of his childhood in the North End. He moved to Bloomfield, he was a policeman in Hartford for twenty five years, and now he's been a policeman in in Hebron for, I think, sixteen years. So um and you'll notice that um everybody on the board was is on on this steering committee is white. And that is a reason for that. Um, we would have liked to get more diversity. But uh in fact, uh the percentage of people of color in 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 Hebron is actually going down. And um uh and that's not to say that that um we would have liked it, but I can understand why um um a person would not want to be on on this committee or at this point, so. We went forward, you know, as this committee um in the hope that we would be a first cut. It was fast, we did it fastest over three months to gather information uh so that a second committee could be formed to um further you know, whatever we found out. And hopefully, a a more diverse committee. So what we said, um, we asked was, so it's good that we we I say what our overall objectives are and read it because it's it's important to the committee. The intention of this committee was to explore what barriers, if any, exist that have inhibited the natural progression of Hebron becoming a more diverse community. This work was completed over a short time period with limited resources meant as a phase one, being begin discussion, and that's important. We followed by a phase two. So we asked, why are the Hebron demographics different from state average? Are there legal and cultural barriers that prevented or inhibited African Americans or people cover from moving to to Hebron? And what positive, and this, I think, is the most important thing, what positive steps can be taken to increase diversity? Because I think you know, from from a national standpoint, from an American standpoint, you know, diversity is a social good. Just is, and like I said, if we don't have diversity or a great deal of diversity in 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 Hebron, especially now with with the world changing so much, we are losing out, I think. So, next slide. Please. So what we did was we looked at Hebron hi history and demographics. We looked at regional history and metro hitch history of Hartford and and its demographics. We looked um at the possible legal and cultural barriers to movement of African Americans and people of color to Hebron. Um, relying on um a a document that just came out, a study that just came out called this A Steady Habit of Segregation, I think it's called. Uh, which is an excellent survey of what's happened in the last, you know, hundred years and in in Connecticut. Most, one of the most important things we did was we did a survey of Hebron citizens attitudes towards Hebron and towards uh race and towards ethnicity. And finally, we did a survey of Hebron school teachers and staff, so um what we tried to do with our committee was was have a broad array of of uh attitudes and and opinions. Um, and you know, I guess we 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 kind of achieved that. Um, certainly, you'll see in the survey that um there is a broad um array of what people think in in town. And we got good responses, we got two hundred and thirty seven responses, but more than that, we we got um you know, over, I think, over a hundred actual comments from people. Because and and this is important is that people really do feel passionate about this, like they we are at a point in history where this is so important, you know, this, you know, racial justice is so important, it's it's we hear about it every day and and people have thoughts and and they care about it. I think people want to do the right thing and um and that's what this is all about. Um, so two surveys, um and then a great deal of history and and um self-education. The committee met, you know, over the last three months, weekly, basically. Um, and so I want to thank the committee, they were they were extremely diligent and committed and um and and they brought, it it was, like I said, they brought their honesty and they brought their their skills and and intelligence to to the discussion. So, next next slide. Um. Yeah, okay, so we'll just talk a little bit about Hebron demographics, um and I I want to thank anybody that wants to know about Hebron demographics. Um, talk to John Barron, I wasn't able to get a hold of him, but he sent me um a tremendous or sent the Board of Selectmen a tremendous uh history of of the the census history of 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 Hebron, going back to the seventeen nineties, I think. And um, you know, showed the presence of people of color in Hebron from the from the beginning. So um he also provided an extensive reference list, which I got some of the materials. I I should say, you know, by next week, um, not only will we have the presentation, I I also have put together a a word document that has all of the comments uh from the surveys. Um, we'll have a reference list of, you know, what we think is interesting or good good materials to read. And um we're put together a note section, I'm not sure that that'll be ready, but but uh um to come to to come with this presentation. So, um, you know, when we talk about Hebron, um, Hebron from the beginning was not very, it was not wealthy. Um, the soils here, the farmland's terrible, so when people, you know, European settlers came here in seventeen oh eight, uh, it wasn't through farming that they were going to get wealthy, but the water mills did provide a lot of source of wealth, so we look at the mills around the town. You'll you find out that you'll see remnants, well, up until eighteen fifty, you know, up until the combustion engine was invented or steam engines, uh water water power was was really important, and in fact, Hebron was a fairly well-off place and um the population of of Hebron actually was, I think, in the early eighteen hundreds, twenty two hundred people. And didn't reach that, it went down, you'll see in the in the subsequent slides, went down af after the decline of water power, because there's no, because that was the source of wealth. Went down to, you know, under a thousand and didn't reach twenty two hundred until after nineteen sixty. So one of the take home messages of Hebron history was that this was not a wealthy place, you know, before nineteen sixty. It was a remote area, it was, there was no source of, you know, uh income, it wasn't a place where people wanted to go and um, you know, it was generally the original European inhabitants that that were were here. Um, and um so going through, you know, what what we did was go through all the comprehensive plans, we went through the annual reports to see what the attitudes were until nineteen sixty, until the post-war baby boom. And um you know, what what was the the idea behind a lot of the policies that that came subsequently? And one of the things was that you had an original population in, say, nineteen forty, nineteen fifty, that was now impacted by the post-war baby boom and the creation of an infrastructure, cities, roads, people coming in, suburbia being formed. And um to some extent um trying to preserve their, the 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 way of life that that was predominant from this massive influx of 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 new newcomers who are not, you know, were generally had had jobs in Hartford or Norwich or someplace not here. Okay, so next next slide. So here's the population, and you know, the population is is pretty high in seventeen eighty two, it starts going down nineteen thirty, you have eight hundred and thirty nine people. And then nineteen sixty, twenty one hundred, you finally reached the seventeen eighty two plateau. And then after that, you start seeing fifty percent increases over decades. Just between nineteen seventy and nineteen nineteen ninety, you have a doubling of the population, and and that is, you know, that is the post-war baby boom and and uh and the the effect of the automobile on on everybody's economies. But again, not, this was not a destination of point of of choice for most people. Next slide. So we looked at what what happened with with Hartford and and, you know, what 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 happened uh with Hartford, Metro Hartford, and was that before nineteen forty, there was, there was a an original population of African Americans, but it, you know, every the country was was revolutionized, changed, transformed by the Great Migration. And that the Great Migration was in twenty the twentieth century, um African Americans fled the South because um it was um obviously discriminatory, but it was as as it was was talked about in Isabel Wilkinson's book, The Warmth of Other Suns. The South was generally kind of a terror, well, it was a terrorist, it was, there was a terror there. And so there was a huge amount, six million African Americans left, and a lot of African Americans came to to Hartford. And by nineteen sixty, um Hartford was now, a majority of Hartford had uh was African American, at least schoolchildren. And and this is where my knowledge and maybe Mark's knowledge comes in, you know, I was in Glastonbury, and that's when Project Concern came out, was there was a a uh in Hartford, there wasn't um enough schools for these African American children or for any of the Hartford school children. There was a thing called the Harvard Project that came in, it was a a study by Harvard sociologists that said um there should be busing to suburban schools, and that's where Project Concern started, and that was, the reason why that's important is because it was the first relationship or first first effect or or the first uh attempt at at integration, uh even if it was a small attempt and uh between Hartford and the inner suburbs. Now, Hebron wasn't asked because it's not part of the metro area, um as it's been pointed out to me. Um, and also because it's remote, and also because at the time, you know, we And also because it's remote and also because at the time, you know, we, Hebron didn't have the resources. It was not someplace that that somebody would have said, you know, you know, Hebron, Hebron's a place to go, you know, Hebron wasn't, wasn't what it was is now. So the second part of this was that by the 1970s and 1980s and 1990s, there was a development of a robust African American middle class in Hartford and other places. And there was an exodus of African Americans and people of color to to the suburbs, some of the suburbs. And some went to Bloomfield, some went to the great majority of them went north to northern suburbs. And we had, you know, the committee had a big discussion about about where ethnic groups went, you know, from Hartford. And Mark was talking about Italians going from the North End to Bloomfield and some of the Italians in South End going to to Rocky Hill. But the point was that, first of all, you went to Glastonbury and almost none, obviously, came to Hebron. And why was that? You know, why didn't the African American or people of color, middle class come to Hebron? And so that was a question that was out there. Next slide. And so, you know, we started looking at all the demographics of of the different towns. And like I said, you know, from the US Census, most recent one, the percentage of African Americans and Hebrons is probably the is the lowest of any town in the area or in in the metro Hartford area. But, you know, this, this all tells a story of 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 migration and barriers to migration. And so we compiled, for example, affordable housing statistics to see what the the relationship was. And where there was successful integration and, you know, it's hard to to look at this and say that there's been successful integration of any really well, I can't say, I won't say that's not, it's not successful, but it's been different. You know, Glastonbury has gone from basically being 99% white when I grew up to being having a substantial Asian population, but still only 2.2% African American. You know, Manchester, I spent part of my childhood in Manchester is now is is a different story, obviously, because it was a mill town that had jobs and that sort of thing, but like I said, this, this, the regional demographics tell a story. We'll get back to this as as we go through the the presentation. Next slide. You know, this is just a slide of of Connecticut, looking at where all of the the towns are. And if you look at the demographics, like I said, there's, there was migration north to northern suburbs, but not the southern suburbs and certainly not to Hebron or to Marlborough. And you know, why, why was that? Okay, next slide. So there's some obvious reasons why people don't come to Hebron, whether you're of any race. One is Hebron's far from cities and from metro areas. And, you know, I mean, talking with younger people, young people don't want to come to Hebron because there's nothing to do. There's no jobs. The houses can be expensive. It's expensive. Taxes are high. And, you know, one of the things, anecdotally, you know, as I went door to door, one of the things that people said was that they were happy to pay higher taxes to keep, you know, Hebron's crime rate low. I guess that's how they they would have said it. So that in itself is restrictive and you see it in the survey. People say that there's not a lot of affordable housing, but also that it's difficult to live here with high taxes. You can buy a house here, but it's hard to stay here. And if you're older, you're leaving because you can go someplace else that has lower taxes. After your kids graduate. There's a lack of infrastructure. There's no public, really no public transportation. So if you're if you don't have the means, you don't have a car, you're not, you're not well off, that's a huge issue. We don't have a commercial base. And 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 here's, here's an important thing is that from from historical standpoint, we never have, really. You know, we have, our taxes are generated from residential tax, property taxes. Over 95% come from that. And and that's the way it's been for a long time. Development of commercial, a commercial base like in Glastonbury or like Canton doesn't necessarily bring diversity, doesn't necessarily bring lower taxes. In fact, Glastonbury does have a commercial data, a commercial base and his businesses, but his mill rate is exactly the same as ours. And again, this is what the survey said also is that there are few stores for shopping and no movie theaters. There's not a lot to do in Hebron. So, you know, why do people come? We'll we'll get into, but there's a lot of reasons why people don't come. And I think us, we had Steve Weir give some, come and talk about affordable housing and he could say, you know, he grew up in Glastonbury and there's people in Glastonbury that wouldn't be caught dead in Hebron because there's nothing to do here. Some of us like that, but you know, that's preference. All right, next slide. Okay, so you know, I think I'm going to stop right there so that we can, next, next time we get into the actual possible barriers from to to migration to Hebron, if that's all right with everybody.
I thank you very much. Yeah, I've been writing down some questions that at at the end, next time I can ask.
Okay.
One of the things, though, if I would be interested in knowing you, or you were getting into the regional demographics, where does Columbia rank? You know, you did Glastonbury, Marlborough, Colchester, just wondering where Columbia ranks.
So this is something I noticed going door to door, and I expect that the Census survey will bear bear this out is, you know, there's more Latinos coming to to Andover, for example. I expect Andover's Hispanic population is going to be quite high in the next census. And in Hebron, you know, so I don't know exactly. I can look that up, but I expect that because Wyndham is so high or Willimantic has has a very high Hispanic population that there's probably been movement of, you know, more well-off or people that that prefer rural living from from Wyndham to to Columbia. And this is something, again, I found, I found going door to door and talking to, this is in particular, I found this in Hebron, talking to Latinos that have been here since 1990. And I was saying, well, you know, what do you like about Hebron? That they they love it. And this is something that people should understand that people love living in Hebron regardless of your ethnic background. But told me that it came in 1990 because it was affordable. This is, I remember in particular, this one woman, she said, I came in 1990 because it was affordable, but now it's not. And I don't, I'm not sure what I'm going to do. And that was interesting to me because, you know, clearly, housing prices have gone up, taxes have gone up and whereas, you know, 1990 Hebron and maybe even Columbia has a lower tax rate than we do. But that is a significant barrier and a significant attractive posture if we had if we were more affordable.
Anybody have any questions or anything at this time? Okay, hearing none. I believe we are up to nine B, which was the question on the Charter, Chapter 11 Ethics, that John had asked me to be put on this.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, so this was asked by a constituent. And it had to do with conflict of interest. And so let me just preface this. I don't, as I said, I don't think we need to go too far over this, but there's no, there's nothing bad about having a conflict of interest, but the Charter does say that if you have a conflict of interest, you need to report it to the town clerk and and whatever wherever that conflict occurs, it has to go into the minutes in detail. And so I would just say that that's, you know, that's, that's putting that out there that we have a code of ethics or in the in the Charter, there's nothing, like I said, there's, there's nothing bad about having a conflict of interest, but it in terms of disclosure, it should be disclosed and yeah, that's it.
Was there a specific question or concern?
I, I don't have anything. A person's conflict of interest has to do their own individual declaration. And I, I mean, I don't have a conflict of interest, but this was asked by constituents, so I I put it on.
Well, that constituent should state what their their question or concern is so that it can be discussed and verified if, in fact, it is a conflict or if it has been something that has been handled or discussed previously. The board has no information to to state whether or not there ever was a conflict or, you know. So it would be nice if that person could let us know what their concern is.
Well, I will ask
It's a dead issue.
Okay, I will ask them and and I will bring back that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to point out that according to what stated there, we all have a conflict of interest because we vote whether our taxes go up or they don't go up, and that's a financial gain or loss on all of us. So in essence, we all have a conflict of interest and we should report it, I guess.
Okay. That's an interesting perspective.
It's an interesting one that I disagree with, but
Okay. Moving on. Our next yes, item would be our draft agenda, which would be Thursday, May 6. When is the, Andy, when is the budget vote?
May 4.
May 4. Okay, I thought that this is after the budget vote. Okay. So, again, anybody that has anything, you know, additions or whatever, things that need to get put on this. I, at this point, can't think of any other stuff to add. Hopefully, the budget process will be done. And we'll be moving forward. So again, keep that in mind. Our next item would be our consent agenda. These are items that the selectman may approve individually or as a group. We have the approval of the minutes of our March 18 regular meeting, our March 23 regular meeting and budget workshop, March 30 regular meeting and budget workshop, and our April 1 regular meeting. And then the tax refunds as as listed. Does anybody want any of those items broken out? Or is there any comments on any of those items or corrections? Anyone? Okay, hearing none. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And it would be the approval of the minutes of March 18, 2021 regular meeting, the March 23, 2021 regular meeting and budget workshop, the March 30, 2021 regular meeting and budget workshop, the April 1, 2021 regular meeting and the tax refund as listed. All in favor signify by saying aye. Gail? Try it again. Gail? Do a thumbs up or something. You're going through all static. Okay, Peter?
Peter Caspar, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Our next will be the liaison reports and we'll start out with Mark.
I just have a couple of quick comments. We're seeing a rise in COVID cases at Ram. There's a lot of contract tracing going on. They've received an email that my stepson might have been exposed to somebody with COVID. But actually, the high school kids have started to get vaccines. My stepson got one a week ago. So it's not over and the school's concerned and we're taking action or I shouldn't say we're taking action. The school's taking action to contract, contact trace to make sure that we're still following all the rules. And I can't say that this is a direct result of going back to school full-time, but it is kind of coincidental that this resurgence just happened a couple of weeks after we returned to school. The other thing I wanted to bring up was two senior classes have raised $24,000 together to have an informational sign put in front of Ram, an LED informational sign. And planning and zoning thinks that somehow that's going to ruin the rural character of Hebron or create some precedent where other entities can put signs up. And that just seems to me dashed in the hopes of these young people and they should be able to have a say in what their high school looks like, what they want for security, for school spirit. And since Ben Colonna's passing, there's been a resurgence to get this thing done and put a flag on it for many for his dedication to Ram and the kids. And and all things Ram. So I just wanted to get that out there and the Ram Board and the school are, this is very important to them and the school community and I would hope with helping them get that done.
Mark, I am sorry, we lost some of, some of your discussion. What I would ask is if you wanted to send us a text or something, you know, make sure it's not, I do not reply just to kind of summarize what they're trying to do because you're, you've lost your, your communication.
Dan, I'm thinking back, so I was in a bad spot. Where did I leave off?
You were starting to get into the Ram Board of Ed and the school and their feelings on it, and then you disappeared.
Okay, so there's, there's a unanimous feeling in the school community. Okay, so there's, there's a unanimous feeling in the school community, whether it be the board, the students, the faculty, the students' parents, that this is something that they want to do. And they, they feel that they, they, that that choice shouldn't be in the hands of just three people. That they should have a say. So I, I was imploring us to see what we can do to support them in this endeavor. And that's it, Dan.
Okay. I would suggest getting out whenever this is going to be brought before landing in the building. Get that information out so that people know that it's coming up.
Good idea, thanks, Dan.
Gail?
All right, um, the senior center, many residents have been asking, as they know me, they've called and they've asked when the senior center will reopen. So I've been telling them that the six centers in the Chatham Health District have been communicating among themselves and with the health district. And the goal is to have a regional approach to reopening. So it's like anyone listening tonight to understand that. In the meantime, services have been continued. Appointments have been made with individual clients, the benefits counseling. Transportation is being provided, not just for medical appointments, but for other things as necessary. And the new equipment that was being ordered through the CAS Act money that we got has been purchased and will be available soon. Douglas Library, we met last Monday. A new strategic plan committee is going to be launched. And something new is Kevin, the director, has been looking into the purchase of a tent to have programming outside as you can't have it inside. There are donation funds that he could tap into for that. So he's currently pricing that. It would be in the back, behind the back door, so restrooms would be available. And it's an interesting idea, have programming during the summer. You can't have it inside, then you can have it outside. And this sadly is the book sale, which many people are looking forward to. Anyone wants to talk to me, I'll be there all day as always. So it's from nine to three and there's a lot, a lot of books available. And the Board of Ed is meeting tonight as they were not able to meet last Thursday. So I have nothing to report from them.
A question, well, I don't have the answer, but I'm going to pose it to you.
Oh, yeah?
Well, yes. Now, the book sale that's going to be held where?
It's going to be held in the community room.
And also the Old Town Hall?
Yes, so in the community room, safety protocols will be in effect. Someone will be at the door counting people, so counting us volunteers, there'll only be 25 people in at a time. And then the children's books, which take up a lot of room, are going to be on display in the Old Town Hall. So there will be someone over there to do what I do, collect money. And it's, uh, it's a way to get more books out on display because during the last several months, so many books have been donated and some really good ones. So, and we have not raised the prices, so it should be, should be a great event.
And again, the time for that, please?
Nine until three.
On Saturday?
On Saturday.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, John?
Steering Committee met and just to answer your question, Dan, I looked it up. Columbia is 96% white, but it is 8% Hispanic, which is reflective of probably its geography and all that. But then land acquisition. We, we met and, you know, there's a couple of good things happening. One of the things that came up was the idea that we need more signage on, on open space areas to get more people available. I, I have still, I think, I think that there's still no trespassing signs on the Horton property. I'm wondering, I'm wondering when we're going to be able to get, make that available to people. The large.
We took those down.
They did? Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that. I think we need a plan to make that more available, just to see, you know. It's a great piece of property. If, if people haven't been there, it's, it's the land right next to downtown that we purchased for $600,000 year, last year or the year before, I forget. But I do, I do think we need a, a plan there. The land acquisition, open space committee is planning, I think, a, a, a walk to look at some of the parcels. One thing that I think we're interested in is the effect of, of cutting and the invasive species in, in, in town. You know, one, one of the, you know, issues out there is the impact of logging on, on open space or on forests. And, you know, I have, I have a natural reaction against it because I, I did own, you know, 20 acres that was, had been clear cut and I was, I battled Scotch broom for, for about 12 years. But so they're looking at that, they're looking at, you know, also at new parcels to, 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 to buy for the town. I think we've decided not to, to evaluate any further the, the piece of property across from the parking or near, near St. St. Peters, near the center. Yeah, I think, I think that's it. Everybody should, should look at Ann Sitkis's article in the, in the, in the Hebron magazine that talks about the, about invasive species and, and, and how they occur. And it gives a good example of what has happened and, and, yeah, so take a look at that. Anyways, that's it for me.
Okay, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing from the Parks and Rec Commission. And just wanted to take the opportunity to applaud the Board of Finance for their very effective, constructive debate during the budget process and their very well done presentation as well. So that's what I have, thank you.
And I myself, at this point in time, have nothing. Although one of the things in, in listening to, to Gail, it would be nice to have our, our health district personnel just kind of maybe do a quick discussion on how they are looking at different things like the senior centers reopening and, and some of that kind of stuff, just, you know. Yeah, there's, there's so many areas and facets of communications and, you know, in-person meetings versus Zoom meetings. And it would, and it would be good, I think, for everyone to hear their rationale and what they look as, as the pitfalls of doing it too early and, and the procedures that need to be followed. I think it would be a, a good informational session, not only for us, but for all the other boards and committees that are out there. So maybe some that could be, you know, put up on one of our next agendas. With that, I'll open it back up for public comment. Again, I don't know if Donna wants to just remind people how to do the public comment.
Sure. Is an opportunity for public comment at this time. If anybody has a public comment, if you could please jot your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. And when you do make your public comment, if you could please state your name and your address. And while we're waiting to see if anybody has interest in speaking at this time, I'm going to read the comments that have been left in the chat box during the meeting because those do need to be part of the record. So Lily Rhodes thanked Caitlin for the presentation. Lindsay Ackman said that was interesting. John, thank you. Lily Rhodes for John's presentation, very informative, thank you. Althea Carr asked if the report is available to the public? And if so, can it be picked up at the town office building? John replayed the, the presentation and comments from the survey should be online or he can send them. We will post that information on our website. It's not there yet, but we will post it. And then John did provide his email address to Althea. Ann Sitkist commented, thank you for the first half of the report from the committee on diversity, John. Looking forward to the second half of the presentation. I appreciate the whole committee's good work. Althea Carr said, thank you for the continued hard work during these challenging times and a special thanks to the steering committee. Lily Rhodes, thank you for posting signs identifying the Hibbert property as public access. And I'm not sure, Joy Susel, if you are still interested in making a public comment at this time. You can speak now. She had indicated earlier, but she may not be with, she may not be with the meeting. All right, so anybody else interested in public comment?
Okay.
I think we're all set.
Thank you, thank you, Donna. Thank you, Dory, the behind the scenes people that make this presentation possible. Thank you all, have yourself a safe day tomorrow. Hopefully old man winter doesn't come and visit too long. Snow, one to three, two to four. Yeah, anyway, thank you, everybody have a safe weekend and.
And it's my turn to say that we are adjourning at 8:43, I'll make that motion.
And any, all in favor? I think I could say everyone is saying aye.
Yeah, good.
Very much. Thank you all.